The Town of Los Gatos Planning Commission Meeting of Wednesday, January 24, 2018 is now called order. Mr. Paulson, will you call the roll?
Thank you. Commissioner Badami?
Here.
Commissioner Birch?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here.
Commissioner Janoff?
Here.
Commissioner Hansen?
Here.
Vice Chair Hudes?
Here.
And Chair Kane?
Here. I'd ask everyone to stand and join Commissioner O'Donnell in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, where my nation, under your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Town of Los Gatos strongly encourages active participation in the public process, which is the cornerstone of democracy and essential to the Planning Commission conducting its business on behalf of the Town Council and the citizens of the town. There are several ways for members of the public to participate in the deliberations of the Planning Commission. Written comments concerning agenda items submitted to the staff prior to a commission meeting are always welcome and helpful. At the meeting itself, there are two ways for members of the public to participate. During verbal communications, an individual may speak on any topic not on the agenda, and any member of the public may speak during the public hearing of items that are on the agenda. If you wish to address the commission tonight during the verbal communication period or during the consideration of an item, please complete a speaker card located on the back of the benches or the bench in front of you, depending upon where you're sitting. Turn the card into a staff member and please print your name clearly. For anyone who intends to speak this evening, I'd ask that you come to the podium, adjust the microphone so that you are speaking directly into it, state your name and address for the record. In fairness to all who want to speak at this meeting, it is requested that you limit your comments to three minutes. I'll ask for subcommittee reports. I know we have historic, and I know we have four items on that agenda. Who will be giving that?
I can talk about historic.
Commissioner Hudes.
Thank you. We had four items that we considered tonight. 121 Glen Ridge Avenue requesting approval for replacement of original windows, which was approved. 202 University Avenue requesting approval of a minor residential development in a historic district. This one was continued. And 51 College Avenue, which was requesting approval to remove a pre-1941 property from the historic inventory, which was not approved. And other—no, I'm sorry. That one was approved. And then the next one, 15 Loma Alta Avenue, which was requesting preliminary proposal to demolish. And that one—we just gave feedback on that. That wasn't up for consideration.
Thank you. Other reports. In addition to their service on the Planning Commission, members of the Commission serve on a number of town committees. And since we're going into a new term, I was asked to confirm those appointments. I checked with the Commission, and folks want to stay on the committees that they're on, which is General Plan, Commissioners Janoff, Birch, and Hansen; Conceptual Development Advisory Committee, Commissioners Badami, Kane, and O'Donnell; and the Historic Preservation Committee, Commissioner O'Donnell and Commissioner, Vice Chair Hudes. That's for the record. We now come to verbal communications. Members of the public are invited to address the Commission on any issue not on tonight's agenda. Remember, there's a three-minute time limit. When the yellow light comes on, it means you have 30 seconds. When the red light comes on, it means you're finished. Do we have any cards tonight for verbal communications? Moving on. We move to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar may be acted upon by a single motion, but before the Planning Commission acts on consent, any member of the public or any member of the Commission may request that an item be removed. Our agenda tonight, provided that we have two items on consent, actually, I'm going to suggest that we have three. Item one is approval of the minutes of January 10, 2018. Item two is 22 South Santa Cruz Conditional Use Permit, application U-16003. This is an annual review of an previously approved CUP to operate cooking classes with beer and wine service and alternating use of parking on property Zone C2. This was and is APN 51045014. Then the other item we have on consent is to dispatch item four, which was a Town Code Amendment Application, project location townwide. The applicant is a town of Los Gatos, and the applicant has requested a continuation of this item. So I'm just going to put it on consent instead of going to it later. Is that acceptable? Does anyone wish to pull any of the items on the consent calendar? In which case can I see a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Commissioner Badami?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. We now move to the public hearings portion of our agenda and consider Agenda Item Number Three, which is 16135 Cheryl Vista Drive. It's an Architecture and Site Application S17044, requesting approval for construction of an addition greater than 100 square feet to the existing second story and exceed the maximum floor area ratio and maximum building height for an existing single-family residence on property Zoned HR2 1/2. This is APN 53730018. Property owner, applicant are here tonight, I believe, and who will we be hearing from? Oh, wait. Why don't we try a staff report first? Staff report. Mr.
Safdie.
Safdie. Mr. Safdie is new with us. Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. The project before you is a request to construct a 113-square-foot addition on the second floor of an existing home, locate on a 10.2-acre parcel in the hillside residential zone. The project is being reviewed by the Planning Commission because the proposal would exceed the maximum height for visible homes in the hillside areas and exceed the maximum allowed floor area. The existing residence and proposed addition are visible from the viewing platform located at the intersection of Blossom Hill Road and Los Gatos Boulevard. The proposed addition would increase the visibility from 79% to 79.3%. Visible homes in the hillside are limited to 18 feet in height and 28 feet for any elevation. The existing home is 24 feet in height, and the building's tallest elevation is 29 feet. The proposed addition would be more than 18 feet above grade and 28 feet in elevation, and therefore requires approval of a major exception to the hillside development standards and guidelines. The application is also being considered by the Planning Commission because the proposed gross floor area would exceed the 6,000-square-foot maximum. The existing home is 5,979 gross square feet, and the total proposed floor area would be 6,092 gross square feet. Staff recommends approval of the floor area exception because the proposed project would not be the largest in the immediate area in terms of square footage or floor area ratio. Staff also recommends approval of the proposed building height exception because the existing residence exceeds the building height maximum, and the proposed bathroom addition would not increase the maximum height of the existing residence. This concludes staff's presentation, and we are happy to answer any questions.
Before I see questions, may I see a show of hands of Commissioners who were able to visit the subject property? I imagine you also got in, because I didn't, but I did walk around it. Questions for staff. Commissioner Birch?
So, just to clarify, are they seeking an exception for the height? Because the house as it stands exceeds the height allowable. Is that a part of our determination here to somewhat retroactively allow for that?
That is correct. So, the proposal would be taller than the 18-foot and both the height maximum limitation. So, although the existing home is over height, the proposal would also need an exception.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Janoff. Did you have your hand up? Commissioner Hanson?
I had two questions. One was regarding dates. As I read this, the reason why the staff is recommending this to be approved is that the house submitted an architecture in site in 2003, which predated our hillside design standards and guidelines. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So, the question I had was about—the date that the house was built was actually in 2007, so there was like a four-year gap. So, is it—it—our policy is that it's based on the date of the architecture in site and not the date that it was put in service?
So, I'll jump in here. There's no policy on when it's built versus when it's approved. The application was submitted in 2003, but I believe it was actually approved in 2004. Therefore, they're required to get building permits at least two years—within the next two years of the approval, and then they have the construction period. That's why there is a discrepancy from when they originally filed the A&amp;S application to when they finished construction.
But that's why—so, basically, what you're saying, though, is that's why it's okay that they're—they don't—didn't have to comply originally with the hillside standards and guidelines because the architecture in site approval occurred prior to the issuance of the hillside design standards and guidelines?
Generally, yes.
And that would be, not just generally, by state law. Once the architectural in site was approved, they have a vested right then. They have received approval, and if no appeal occurs, obviously, then they have approval for that project. And if any time, any project we do—perfect example is, you know, obviously, the North Forty—is any time you make changes to the project, it doesn't—to the—to the rules or regulations or standards, it won't affect a project that's already vested, which occurred once the architectural in site was completed.
Okay, good. One other quick question. As far as the conditions for approving the floor area ratio exception, one of the conditions was about permeable surfaces, and the comment that was made—it says in the design guidelines that you have to have more than 25% permeable surfaces. And the way I read it is it—the house doesn't currently have that, and since the project doesn't involve permeable surfaces, it's not an issue. I just wanted to understand because that's something that we're required to say is a finding, and I wanted to understand about the permeable surfaces because it's just said it's not an issue.
They're not modifying the permeable surface at all, and they're not increasing the footprint. So, staff doesn't believe that that specific item needs to be addressed. However, if the Commission disagrees, then you could require that as a condition of approval. But essentially, we don't want someone to go out and rip up impervious surface to replace it with permeable— with pervious surface if they're not proposing to impact any of that at all.
Well, okay. So, I understand it. But there—as I also read, they're going to change the light reflectivity value by painting the trimmings from white to a darker color. So, I don't know—I don't see any, you know, big issue with that. I just wanted to understand how that process worked.
The painting of the trim?
No, the permeable surfaces. Because it does—I—it doesn't have anything to do with the addition, but—but since it's coming up for discretionary approval of some kind, then I don't—didn't know if that was something that should be brought up.
You definitely can bring it up. Staff doesn't believe it's relevant in relation to this application. However, if the Commission thinks differently, they always have that choice.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Commissioner Hudes?
Just a quick question about the visibility analysis. I understand that we—there's a new visibility analysis. I wasn't sure what the status was. Could you clarify that? And also, is this property subject to that? Is it relevant to what we're considering tonight?
So, the updates to the visibility analysis have been adopted by council. So, we will be getting those to the Planning Commission shortly so that you can insert those new sheets into your guidelines, as well as getting them online. The only change that would affect this application is that if you have a visible home, all of your materials have to be an LRV of less than 30. And so, that's why the applicant is painting their trim, painting their gutters. Previously, as I think we talked about when we talked about the visibility, staff looked at the main body of the house and made sure that LRV was 30. But trim and gutters and those things, staff did not require to be that. However, this change will incorporate the revisions that are necessary.
Thank you.
It will be all?
Less than 30.
LRV less than 30.
Correct.
All right. Other questions? I have a comment for staff. A thank you. On page six of eight of the report, under Neighborhood Compatibility, the neighboring properties are shown zone, size, FAR, but the final column is year built, and that's a request we had made, I think, at our prior meeting. It prevents you from going crazy, saying, "How did that 8,000-square-foot house get there?" Well, it got there because it was built in 1995. So, I thought the dates would be relevant. All of these structures predate the hillside standards and guidelines. And so, if you see big numbers, that's because the guidelines weren't in effect at that time, and we can determine that by having that column with the dates on there. Thank you. Seeing no further questions, I'm going to open the public portion of the public hearing and give the applicant an opportunity to address the Commission for up to 10 minutes. And we have—
My name is Bob Fleury. I'm with Fleury Bryant Design Group. We're the project designers. I just want to—I—we totally agree with the staff report. There's nothing in there that we're contesting. So, I just want to let you know that we're here. If you have any questions of us, I'm here. Todd Bayless, the project architect, is here, and the owner, Ruben Caballero, is here. So, if you have any questions, hopefully, between the three of us, we'll be able to answer them.
Questions from the Commission. Commissioner, go ahead.
I just had a quick question. I read your letters of justification, but I just wanted to understand—it's a—it's a lot of effort to go through—to go through a Planning Commission hearing and to get 113-square-foot addition to a master bath. And I—when I was reading the letters of justification, I didn't see any just—any particular reason for doing this. So, I just wanted to understand, you know, what the—what the driving force was behind this, because we're being asked to approve exceptions to the hillside guidelines.
Right. Well, I would have to defer to the owner on that. I mean, the owner would like to have, you know, a nice, big master bathroom. And so, that's what we're trying to give him.
And there was also a comment in the justification letter that something to the effect of—that you—the owner or applicant didn't want to be denied things that were already available to the other houses in the vicinity. So, is there some discrepancy between the—
You know, I'm going to let Todd Bayless respond to that because he actually wrote the letter and all that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bayless, give us your name and address, please.
My—my name is Todd Bayless, and I am also with Fleury Bryant Design Group. I believe you were referring to item A in my justification letter. "The strict application of the zoning regulations deprives the property of the privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity and under identical zone classifications." And that's referring to the square footage of the house. As we just looked on, I believe it was page six of the report, there are houses in the vicinity, some of which are on smaller lots that have larger footprints.
Questions for the Speaker. Seeing none, thank you. You have more time if you want to provide us with additional information, or if the owner does. Then I'm going to open up this portion of the hearing to members of the public to provide general comment. They may speak up to three minutes. I see no cards. So, you get an additional five to add or debate anything you heard.
I see one.
All right. Commission? I have some items. Please, come back up. Number one, I wanted to compliment you on your letters of justification. They were very helpful, very clear, and can set us on a road of understanding the project. The second concern I had was in the staff report itself, and in the conditions of approval, there is a comment on—this is item six, where I think you wrote "exception to maximum allowable floor area." And this is the nine bullets where you have to be able to comply with every one of them to get the exception. And number six is "the house will be prewired for future voro falteik"—did I say that right, Commissioner Birch? "Installation." And the comment is, "it is the intent of the owner to install PV panels at a later date, and the current proposal will incorporate pre-wiring." So, it seems to me like the standard conditions of approval for this project—not your letter, but those—say you need to pre-wire. And I'm just wondering—I guess if you pre-wire, you meet the condition, then you don't have to do anything else. Is it—is it the intent, in fact, to put in the photocells?
At some point in the future, the intent wasn't to do it as part of this project.
Well, if you're providing for the wiring, why not finish it? Cost?
I'm not sure what the driving factor was there. You have any input on that?
Doing what's important first, and then getting to the other stuff that you want to do later.
Yeah, I think he's trying to—you know, we're trying to control the scope of the project so that it—you know, it's manageable, and we can get them moved into the house because they haven't even lived there yet. And so, the things that we could defer, we're deferring, like the, you know, installation of the solar panels.
All right. Thank you. Any other comment or question? Commissioner Birch?
So, it is a lot of work for 113,000 square feet. Sorry, 113—sorry. I'm—I'm sorry. I'm reading and talking. My apologies. Thank you, Commissioner. I'm just a little curious on—you know, when you look at the layout here and how you extended the bathroom just into the terrace, why maybe instead of going through this exercise and this cost, you didn't utilize a portion of the rec room, push that closet over, and rework the master bathroom? That way, it would have given you pretty much the same square footage, and you wouldn't be here.
Well, there's purposes for all those other rooms, though. I mean, we didn't want to give up, you know, bedrooms and rec rooms to do that if we didn't have to, you know? So, yeah, it's just—
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, it's part of an overall design, and, you know, the other rooms in the house have a—have a function, and we didn't want to remove those functions for the bathroom.
Okay.
Any further questions? Thank you. I'll now close the public portion of the public hearing and ask if any Commissioners have questions for staff, wish to make a comment on the application, or wish to make a motion. Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'd like to make a motion that—hang on for a second—that we approve the architecture in site application subject to the recommended conditions of approval, which are set forth in Exhibit Three. And we would find that the proposed project is categorically exempt pursuant to Section 15303 of the California Environmental Quality Act, which is described in Exhibit Two. We make the findings as required by the hillside standards for granting an exception to the maximum allowed height of 18 feet for visible homes in the hillside area, and the required findings as required by the same ordinance for granting an exception to the maximum allowed height of 28 feet of a building's tallest elevation, as measured from the lowest point of the building to the highest point for visible homes in the hillside area, and making the required findings for granting an exception to the maximum allowed floor area of 6,000 feet. And the finding that, other than the exception to the maximum allowed building height and maximum floor area, the project complies with the HDS and G. Make the finding that the project is in compliance with the hillside specific plan set forth in Exhibit—references set forth in Exhibit Two. We would make the required considerations as required by Section 2920150 of the Town Code for granting approval of the architect in site application, and approve the architecture in site application S17023 with the conditions contained in Exhibit Three and the development plans in Exhibit Ten.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Commissioner Janoff?
Second.
Comments on the motion? If not, I have a question for staff. I'm going to go back to that solar panel question again. And in our allowing for exceptions to maximum allowable floor—it seems like this is a standard provision—that the applicant ought to run wires. I don't see what we accomplished by just running wires. Would it be unfair or unprecedented to seek a date certain or a time limit? If we're going to run those wires, why not hook up the solar?
Because the requirement is only to pre-wire the house. It does not say you have to install the solar panels. And so, I don't believe that's something you should impose. However, as you know, the Commission can always impose any additional conditions they wish.
Well, I'll take it offline. I just think it's curious that we get it all set up, but we don't finish the job. So, any other comments or questions? Commissioner Hudes? Commissioner Hudes?
I'll be supporting the motion, although I did not necessarily find it a compelling argument that the other rooms already have a purpose. What is persuasive to me is my examination of the site and looking at the actual impact, and then going to the viewing platform at the corner of Blossom Hill and the Boulevard and looking and seeing that really this is minimal, is the way I would describe the impact. So I will be supporting the motion because I think it is really a minimal change, and so therefore I think I can support it.
I'd like to support that comment by saying the letter on January 3rd from Mr. Bayless, where he provides a shadow outline of what's there and what's going to be there, and that's like a tiny little speck meets the definition of de minimis, I would think. Again, a good report. I intend to support the motion. Other comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Passes unanimously. Mr. Paulson, are there appeal rights?
There are appeal rights. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the Planning Commission can appeal that decision. The appeal must be filed within 10 days. The forms are available in the clerk's office, and there is a fee for filing the appeal.
Thank you. Moving on to other business, are there any commission matters? Concerns, comments? Then I'll take a report from the Director of Community Development.
Thank you, Chair. So on January 16th, the council introduced modifications to the accessory dwelling units ordinance. They also considered proposed amendments to the North Forty specific plan, but ultimately continued that to 206 and requested some additional information from staff. And they also approved a story pole exception for 16212 Los Gatos Boulevard. That is a project that was previously proposed as residential. They have since changed that to a commercial project, and the exception that they received was to minimize the time that the poles need to be up. And so the poles will only be up for 10 days, which is a little shorter than they typically would be, and then that time would span, it probably starts 10 days before the Planning Commission hearing and runs through the Planning Commission hearing. They received a similar exception for the residential project as well, and so when that one is ready to come before the Planning Commission, that will occur.
This is the Wine Depot looking?
Correct.
Yes, thank you.
Yes. And then lastly, on 206, the, we are looking forward to beginning an update of our general plan. We adopted the general plan in 2010, and it is, original intent was to go through 2020, so we are beginning now in hopes that we will somewhere around that 2020 timeframe be through that process. So we'll be going to the council and asking for input from them on scope and items that they want to see addressed so that we can prepare a work plan to take back for their consideration and then ultimately go out for a request for proposals so that we can get a consultant on board to help us with the general plan update and the environmental impact report that will go along with that document.
Thank you. Anything else? This is my first night as chair for this term. I just want to know, am I going to get in trouble for getting us out of here before 7:30? I don't want to...
You win an award.
Any other comment? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.